Michael, how we doing? Ready? Okay. I'm gonna do attendance, all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Meeting will come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mannan.
Here.
Counselor Matusk.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGolffman.
Here.
Counselor Politano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Eleven members present, Mr. President.
Thank you. Would the audience please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any notices?
No.
Okay.
Mr. President, Counselor McKinnon and Simonelli would like a moment of silence for Joseph King, Department Counselor.
For who?
Joe King.
Counselor King.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. The clerk will read the first item on the agenda.
I'm number one, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, it is a public hearing to all interested persons interested to allow Mobility LLC to install backhaul transport equipment existing pole at intersection of Mohan and Chisholm Street with electricity connection.
No. We gotta have the petitioner's first. Ask for the petitioner.
We'll just have a petitioner from the floor.
Yeah. Is the petitioner present? Will you please come forward, sir? If you would name an address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Brian Grossman, Anderson and Krieger, One Canal Park, Suite 200, Cambridge, Massachusetts, 02141. On behalf of the petitioner, Mobility LLC.
Any questions? Would you explain a little bit what the petition is?
Happy to. So, I know it was here a few weeks ago with a slightly different proposal that involved placement of new poles. In appropriate circumstances where available, Mobility can utilize existing utility poles. This is one such application. So, there's an existing 30-foot utility pole near the corner of Mohan and Chisholm. Mobility proposes to locate an antenna on top of the existing utility pole. That will extend less than four feet above the existing utility pole. Sorry, I saw two hands go up.
No, I just, it's okay. You continue.
There are some, there is some equipment attached to the pole as well, and I know last time we didn't have plans or anything to...
Who else had their hand up? And who, anybody else? Mike, okay.
Apologize. So, what I do have is, it's not a mock-up of the proposed pole location. It's a photograph of an existing installation that's very similar to what's being proposed. It's actually more, more helpful. So, I have those that we can, a couple copies we can pass around. I do have a couple copies of the plans as well. The second page, so after the title page, shows a picture of the existing location and pole that's to be utilized.
Well, he has a couple more, I think. Those are the same copies. Come on. What is it? How many? That's a regular top, that's a regular pole right there. So, they're adding, they're adding that much onto it. But they're adding all this onto it too. That's a pipe, okay, yeah.
As, as previously explained at the, at the prior hearings, Mobility is building out a hybrid transport network. So, it is providing backhaul. So, it is providing essentially the same service that, you know, RCN or Verizon Landline or, uh, uh, thank you. Light Tower would be providing, by providing hardwired fiber back to, you know, a particular location. Instead, one of the advantages of this type of proposal is it obviously, where necessarily doesn't require new poles, doesn't require new trenching or anything for, you know, the installation of fiber, as well as allows Mobility clients and, and customers to provide the services they need to provide, as well as obtain the backhaul they need to provide those services. And as part of those services, you know, there are a lot of, of benefits and uses associated with the build-out. The country, as well as the world, is moving towards what they call 5G. That requires extraordinarily high speed, low latency. And by moving the distribution point closer to the subscriber and the user, it helps deliver those services that are essential to really the growing economy. By way of information, 30 million megabytes of data are used every five minutes just to stream data. Eighty-four percent of shoppers who are in a store still use their smartphone to help inform their purchase. So, shoppers in Everett stores, visitors to areas, residents, 80% of all wireless calls originate from indoors. A lot of those are residential for obvious reasons. Stencification helps involve, or helps with improved emergency response times because people, of course, have access to wireless services, and they may have their phone on them and may not have it nearby in a landline. Mobile data from last year in 2015 to 2020 is expected to grow at an annual compound rate of 42%. It's gonna grow six times from what it was in 2015 to 2020. All of that means wireless usage is, is going up. Subscribers want and need to be able to use their devices where they expect to be able to use them and where they want to be able to use them, as well as, as we talked about last time as well, the, the growth of, and the continued growth of smart devices and the so-called Internet of Things, where devices that today may be quote dumb devices, like most refrigerators, my refrigerator, just holds food, doesn't communicate with anything. There are refrigerators now that can communicate with their owner to tell that owner, "You are low on milk. You are low on eggs. I've stopped running," and provide additional information. Washers, dryers, cars, a whole host of other devices that we haven't even thought of are all going to become connected in a way that we can't even possibly foresee. Those all need the backhaul services of this kind of network in order to deliver the user experience that your residents are going to demand.
Counselor McKinnon, if you have some questions?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, to the representative. What is the frequency level for this device? I mean, we went over this before. I remember that we were going over this a couple of times. I wanna know the frequency. What's the maximum? What's the minimum? It, does it cause any health effect on any of the people? This is a high residential area, and I live the next street over, so I wanna know that as well. Plus, I know all the people in the surrounding community there. So, why do we have to have a notice, stay back, radio frequency, energy may exceed exposure limits?
All installations like this one require some sort of FCC notice. Actually, with this installation, even if you were to climb up the pole and be right in front of the antenna, it would still be less than the allowed FCC limits for public exposure. And they're a difference, they're, they're different for occupational exposure, they're actually higher. And the, the public exposure is, is considered on a 24/7 basis, and it's considered with the highest potential output. So, when they do the calculations, they make assumptions that would increase what you would expect in terms of the overall percentage of FCC limit, even though those assumptions can't necessarily be true. Like, the ground is a perfect reflector versus the fact that, you know, ground with cement and gravel and, and grass would not perfectly reflect the signal and therefore would actually reduce overall emissions. If you are on the same horizontal plane within 12 feet of the antenna, which in this case isn't, again, not possible, it's less than 5% of the FCC allowable limit at the ground directly underneath the pole, it would be even less than that.
What, what happened to the other two sites? You were gonna be utilizing a site on Ferry Street, and then another site, where, where was that other site gonna be? Nichols, okay. Another highly populated area.
My recollection of those two sites, those were both two proposed new poles, and so we are...
And that would've been the 75-feet pole that we needed to get this thing off the ground? Is that, okay. So, how come this one only needs four?
It's the, it's the difference in the area they're trying to cover. It's the being able to utilize the existing pole rather than installing a pole for that new area. I'll tell you, we are reevaluating, you know, those areas and the use of the 75-foot poles. We heard that message very strongly. That's why those other two applications are not before you tonight and aren't filed. They won't be going forward. They're looking at how to redesign and reevaluate those areas. It doesn't mean they're not areas of need. It just means, you know, certainly, as I said, we heard the message loud and clear and needed to sharpen our pencils and go back. This is exactly the type of installation that we would hope you're looking for. It utilizes an existing pole. It's minimal in terms of overall appearance and installation, and it still meets the needs of, of the customer.
But exposure, we don't really have medical documentation on that. It's just a warning sign that it could exceed.
We wouldn't post medical information at the site?
Is there any medical information on this?
I know I had it with me at the last...
Because I'm sure that, I mean, it's a heavily, you know, populated area. I don't wanna actually vote on something that might be a health concern down the road here.
It's still, it, it would still have to comply with FCC license, with FCC requirements, so it would still...
But see, sir, what I'm saying is, this notice here, that's gonna be posted on a pole, is going to cause problems. So, and what it says is, "Stay back," right? And it may, "Radio frequencies, energy may exceed exposure limits." So, if you seen that at your house, what would you think?
I know I had it with me at the last, I think I may have pulled it.
If it was at your house, what would you think? If you seen something like this on a pole? I mean, I, me, I don't want it, I'll be honest with you.
I don't want it to, to be quite honest with you. Yeah, I wouldn't be climbing utility, I wouldn't be climbing utility poles and, and wouldn't be at the top. So, you know, again, in, in terms of FCC regulation, it meets, and falls well under the FCC requirement.
Is there any medical evidence that this is okay to be putting on our poles in Everett?
It's, I mean, in terms of operation...
I asked you for the medical evidence. Do you have it?
I, I don't have it.
Okay.
We do, we have run, we have run specific studies for the mobility installation in terms of, you know, compliance with FCC regulations. Again, all facilities are required to comply with FCC regulations. The issue of radio frequency emissions is within the sole exclusive jurisdiction of the FCC.
I mean, we, we, we're representing districts here of people. These people start seeing signs like this, they're gonna be questioning that. So, we need to have all that information furnished to us, so that we have proper information to give to them.
I'd be happy to come back with it and bring the site. I apologize, I actually thought it was in the file from the last time I was here.
It's not.
But I know, actually, you brought it up. We did talk about it thoroughly.
Sure. Well, I mean, the last time it was the appearance of the pole and 75 feet, and now, we've already, we've already had instances of where we've had problems with different, you know, satellite companies being on our poles, and, and then we couldn't actually do anything with double polling or anything like that. We had to go actually put something into state legislation for that. So, is there gonna be a problem with that? That was a question that was posed to you before. Do you have the answer?
Again, in terms of owning the pole, Mobility won't, won't own the pole in terms of responsiveness. It's a much smaller company. It's much more, able to be much more responsive, be able to remove things if, if they need to be removed for, for any reason. Not, not sure what other assurance I can, I can give you, but Mobility is certainly aware of the issue. It's not the first time the questions come up here or in other locations. And, you know, other than, I don't know how otherwise satisfied others have been, so we've, we've heard the concern, Mobility typically is not the one holding this up. They would be very responsive to removing their installation.
Because we always hear, like, you know, "This one is holding this up. This one's holding this up, and we can't fix the pole." That's what we're hearing. We don't wanna hear that because of you and, and your being on this pole. You see what I'm saying? So, that's what we're looking at now.
No, absolutely understood. As I said, communicated that concern to Mobility, and the response has been what I related before and just now, which is, you know, they will be responsive to, to that kind of issue and not be the ones that are holding, holding up removal of equipment or replacement of poles.
Thank you.
Counselor McGolffman, please.
Through you, through, to Mr. Grossman. Mr. Grossman, a couple of quick questions. How far off the top of the pole does this odd device sit?
It sits...
And I'm sorry, I'm just seeing this for the first time tonight.
Sure. It pretty much sits right on the pole, so it will max out at, so the pole itself is 30 feet, and the top of the proposed antenna is 33 eight inches, so it will...
So, it's just a small gap off of...
At most be three feet, eight inches.
Off of the top. Who grants you guys permission to allow you to attach to an existing pole? How do you guys go, the process of being able to get permission to grant access on an existing pole?
It's through, the typical channels that anyone would go to locate installation or, or a facility or, or attach to the pole. So, you, you go to the pole owner, whether it's Eversource or National Grid or Verizon Landline. Mobility has agreements with, with Eversource and National Grid at this point. They don't have the, the final master agreement with Verizon Landline, they're working on it.
Because I am also concerned, like Counselor McKinnon, and I'm sure every one of our colleagues, that, to see the language that you guys are going to be responsible for removing equipment if a double pole issue comes about in our city. We know that there's hundreds of them, unfortunately, that we can't get removed, as Counselor McKinnon was just talking about. So, I would definitely like to see the language in there that, that gives, in black and white, some, some strong language that assures us that Mobility is going to be responsible, because you, you represent Mobility, correct?
Correct.
And is there any other few, near-future plans for other poles? Because you did come before us for two sites previously. Both were shot down. Tonight, you're coming before us for one. Are there any closer, in the near-future, poles that you're gonna be presenting to the City Council for permission?
I am aware of the, the four, that the two we were talking about that were filed and then didn't go forward, the two that were rejected. That's all I am currently aware of. It doesn't mean there aren't more. I would wanna make that representation. I would certainly never make the representation that that's, that's it. You'll never hear from us again, because as I just explained, you know, that part of this is driven by, by growth and need, and so an area even today that we may not have planned, if there's an explosion of growth and the client, a customer identifies that area as an area of need for additional service, they look to address it, and Mobility may be how they, how they choose to do that. Like I said, I know we have the four, and we're looking at how we can provide the necessary network services, hopefully without the installation of, of a new 75-foot pole.
I just think, right now, at this point, to be very honest, I'm, I'm not comfortable taking this vote. I think that there's just too many unknown questions that could potentially come up in the future for us as City Councilors, that I don't truly feel that we have enough information to make a sound decision tonight that this is good for our residents. It's good for the neighborhoods that we represent. You know, this happens to be a street away from Counselor McKinnon's home, and I have many friends that live on this street as well, and I'm concerned that we not going to have the answers for them when they come and ask us for them, because it's a very broad statement that we're making tonight on the, on these, on, on behalf of Mobility. There's no real, you know, decisive answers or, or plan in place for this. So, at this point, I really can't support this, so, thank you.
Counselor Delasola.
Good evening. I got a couple of questions. When you came last time, you were gonna add 75 feet onto the old existing pole that was there, correct? I mean, you were gonna put your own pole up?
Correct. Those were new poles.
Well, come all of a sudden, now they, this came up, and it's only three feet off an old pole. Why didn't you just come the first time and say, "We wanna put this small device on top of a pole that's already there"?
They're different, they're different locations, and actually, the, the actual equipment, in terms of the antenna and the attachments, are very, are essentially the same, or exactly the same, as what was proposed with the newer pole, with the, or the prior applications. It was just the installation of the new pole and the need for the additional height to provide the, the services in that particular area, in this particular area with the pole location, with the topography the way it is, with the population density the way it is, and building density the way it is. They were able to utilize the existing pole rather than having to propose a new or much, much taller pole. It's very, you know, very similar in that respect to, you know, other wireless designs where, you know, one, in one case, a provider could use a 40-foot building and, you know, attach to a building, but in another area, they are proposing a 110-foot tower. It's, it's, it's a difference in the locale itself.
So, if this goes up, as a resident, we're not gonna see no difference in our phone use, refrigerator, wherever we're gonna use it for. It's not gonna change anything in the city of Everett, correct? If that goes up on the pole? Like you're saying, everybody uses the frequency and all this stuff. If this goes up here, it's not gonna change better reception for anything that's used in the city of Everett, correct?
I'm not sure, I understand the question. It will provide, it, in terms of, of reception, possibly not. In terms of, you, there's two parts of the, of the user experience, right? There's whether or not you have a signal, and then there's the, the throughput. So, you may have a lot of bars, but if you are at, you know, the TD Bank North Garden during a Bruins or Celtics game, your phone may say you have five bars, but if you try and access, you know, the Internet, you may, may crawl along. Part of that is, is a capacity issue and a backhaul issue. This helps solve that backhaul issue and would help increase the speed seen in the area.
Look, I said my question was, are we gonna see any impact if this goes up? If I'm using my equipment tonight, this goes up tomorrow morning, tomorrow night, I turn that equipment on again, am I gonna see more bars on my device that I'm using, or it's just gonna stay the same?
It certainly won't interfere. I wanna make that clear as well, as I said, I don't know if that was part of your question. It will depend on, on the device, but if that device is using the network that Mobility is, is providing backhaul for, and you may not see an increase of bars, but you may see an increase of speed, regardless of the fact you don't see an increase in bars.
I mean, so, look, look at, how do we benefit by allowing this on the pole? That's, we're all looking at, and also, the sign on the back, I mean, like my colleague said, that, that would scare me walking down the street and not knowing anything what that is on the pole and seeing this "Stand Back Frequency" sign, walking down the street with your child or your, your dog, wherever you're walking. I, I'd go around the pole, I'd go on the other side of the street. So, I know that's the rule and the law, but it's just, it's all new to us, this is the problem. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many other cities and towns have, have installed these antennas?
Mobility is working throughout Massachusetts and New England, but there are similar, this is similar type of architecture that others have installed as well. Other companies such as Extranet, which is a similar and a competitor, which is similar and competitor, has installed in Boston. Mobility is working on installing in Boston. Extranet has an existing network in Salem. Mobility has existing networks in Atlanta, Baltimore, Los Angeles, amongst many others. They started out kind of west and south.
But I'm talking about in Massachusetts. Has Mobility installed any of these antennas in any other city and town in Massachusetts?
Mobility is, Mobility is new to the market, so they're still doing the initial permitting and build-out for, for all of those installations in Massachusetts. They only started really in...
So, we were the lucky first people to get it?
You're one of, a number of, you're one of several communities. It's not, it's not just Everett. There's applications in, again, Boston, Salem, Brookline, Quincy.
But all these applications that are in Salem, Brookline, Boston, that you've named, have they approved it? Are you going, or you still have to go in front of the council to have it approved?
Uh, there are, there's an approval in Salem. There are a number of communities, by the way, that I'm not working in, so I may not be aware that, that Mobility is, is going forward at all, because we're only assisting them up in, you know, in several communities. So, I know there's, I know there are approvals in Salem, because I was there for that. I'm not, I haven't personally been involved in, in any other approvals with, been recently engaged in dealing with, with Mobility and helping, so...
Well, I wanna be fair, and I wanna be open-minded, so I really don't wanna vote no on this, but I'm not very about yes either. So, I would, I would recommend we lay it on the table. I'd like to do a little more research before I make that decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Speaker, Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guest. I, I do share some of the concerns that my colleagues are raising. You have to realize that we do have to look out for the residents of our community. You had mentioned the emissions were 5% of what was allowed by FCC. What's the amount that FCC allows?
Don't know that actual...
Okay, but this is 5% or whatever that number would be?
Correct.
Okay. Where is, the notice that was pointed out, where exactly is that going to be located on the pole? At what level?
So, on page, I don't know if you have the, the copy of the small...
Like a height level? Would it be...
No, I just wanted to, so, for anyone who has the, the plan that they handed out, on sheet 6.0, it does tell you where the sign is affixed, three to four feet below the antenna itself. So, in this case, it would be about the...
Okay, so it's way up. It's about 27 feet near?
Twenty-seven, 26-foot level, yeah.
Okay, so, so no one's gonna be seeing that, that posting anyway? It's just basically there because FCC says you have to post something?
Right.
Okay. And then, as far as the equipment that I'm looking at on this pole, looks like there's four junction boxes or, or something along those lines, something running down the side of the pole. Is everything above ground level, or is there anything in the ground?
Other than, you know, other than the conduit to run, to run power, and that obviously goes even the ground and then underneath, the lowest point is just about 11 feet.
That lowest junction box is about 11 feet?
Yeah, the middle of that junction box is at 11 feet, so, you know, 90...
And the last question I have for you is, how long would something like this take to install on a pole?
In terms of actual construction, not very long. You know, a day or two or three, at most. The actual construction time period in terms of making sure you get, you know, any necessary inspections or anything, usually, and that's semi-dependent, you know, on inspectors, schedules, and things like that. Overall, it's about 12 days.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much.
No further questions. You are excused. Please do not leave the chamber, though, in case we need to call you back, okay? Yes, all right? Please don't leave the chambers. This is, ladies and gentlemen, the audience, this is a public hearing. Anyone that is interested in speaking in favor or opposed to this petition is allowed to come forward and speak. If you just wanna give your name, you can also do that, too. So, I'll ask three times in each part if you would like to speak on this matter. So, to the audience, is there, does anybody want to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wanna speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wanna speak in favor of this petition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the hearing. Is anyone to speak in, opposed to this petition? Yes, would you like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Patrick Thistle.
I know we have the four, and we're looking at how we can provide the necessary network services, hopefully without the installation of a new seventy-five-foot pole.
I just think, right now, at this point, to be very honest, I'm not comfortable taking this vote. I think that there's just too many unknown questions that could potentially come up in the future for us as city councilors, that I don't truly feel that we have enough information to make a sound decision tonight that this is good for our residents, it's good for the neighborhoods that we represent. You know, this happens to be a street away from Council McKinnon's home, and I have many friends that live on this street as well. And I'm concerned that we're not going to have the answers for them when they come and ask us for them, because it's a very broad statement that we're making tonight on behalf of mobility. There's no real, you know, divisive answers or plan in place for this. So, at this point, I really can't support this. Thank you.
Council Delisola?
Good evening. I've got a couple of questions. When you came last time, you were going to add seventy-five feet onto your old existing pole that was there, correct? You were going to put your own pole up?
Correct. Those were new poles.
Well, come all of a sudden, now this came up, and it's only three feet off an old pole. Why didn't you just come the first time and say, "We want to put this small device on top of a pole that's already there"?
They're different locations, and actually, the actual equipment, in terms of the antenna and the attachments, are essentially the same, or exactly the same, as what was proposed with the newer pole, with the prior applications. It was just the installation of the new pole and the need for the additional height to provide the services in that particular area, in this particular area, with the pole location, with the topography the way it is, with the population density the way it is, and building density the way it is. They were able to utilize the existing pole, rather than having to propose a new or much, much taller pole. It's very similar in that respect to, you know, other wireless designs, where, you know, in one case, a provider could use a forty-foot building, and, you know, attach to a building, but in another area, they're proposing a hundred-and-ten-foot tower. It's a difference in the locale itself.
But if this goes up, as a resident, we're not going to see no difference in our phone use, refrigerator, wherever we're going to use it for. It's not going to change anything in the city of Everett, correct? If that goes up on the pole? Like you're saying, everybody uses the frequency and all this stuff. If this goes up here, it's not going to change better reception for anything that's used in the city of Everett, correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question. It will provide... In terms of reception, possibly not. In terms of... There's two parts of the user experience, right? There's whether or not you have a signal, and then there's the throughput. So, you may have a lot of bars, but if you are at, you know, the TD Bank North Garden during a Bruins or Celtics game, your phone may say you have five bars, but if you try and access, you know, the internet, you may crawl along. Part of that is a capacity issue and a backhaul issue. This helps solve that backhaul issue, and would help increase the speed seen in the area.
Look, as I said, my question was, are we going to see any impact if this goes up? If I'm using my equipment tonight, this goes up tomorrow morning, tomorrow night, I turn that equipment on again, am I going to see more bars on my device that I'm using, or it's just going to stay the same?
It certainly won't interfere. I want to make that clear as well, as I don't know if that was part of your question. It will depend on the device, but if that device is using the network that mobility is providing backhaul for, you may not see an increase of bars, but you may see an increase of speed, regardless of the fact you don't see an increase in bars.
I mean, so look at, how do we benefit by allowing this on the pole? That's what we're all looking at. And also, the sign on the back, I mean, like my colleague said, that would scare me walking down the street, not knowing anything what that is on the pole, and seeing this "Stand Back Frequency" sign, walking down the street with your child or your dog, wherever you're walking. I'd go around the pole, I'd go on the other side of the street. So, I know that's the rule and the law, but it's just... It's all new to us, is the problem. Thank you.
Council DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many other cities and towns have installed these antennas?
Mobility is working throughout Massachusetts and New England. There are similar... This is a similar type of architecture that others have installed as well. Other companies such as Extranet, which is a similar competitor, has installed in Boston. Mobility is working on installing in Boston. Extranet has an existing network in Salem. Mobility has existing networks in Atlanta, Baltimore, Los Angeles, amongst many others. They started out kind of west and south.
But I'm talking about in Massachusetts. Has Mobility installed any of these antennas in any other city and town in Massachusetts?
Mobility is new to the market, so they're still doing the initial permitting and build-out for all of those installations in Massachusetts. They only started really in...
So, we were the lucky first people to get it?
You're one of a number of... You're one of several communities. It's not just Everett. There's applications in, again, Boston, Salem, Brookline, Quincy.
But all these applications that are in Salem, Brookline, Boston, that you've named, have they approved it? Or you still have to go in front of the council to have it approved?
There's an approval in Salem. There are a number of communities, though, that I'm not working in, so I may not be aware that Mobility is going forward at all, because we're only assisting them in, you know, in several communities. So, I know there are approvals in Salem, because I was there for that. I'm not... I haven't personally been involved in any other approvals. I've been recently engaged in dealing with Mobility and helping, so...
Well, I want to be fair, and I want to be open-minded, so I really don't want to vote no on this, because I'm not very about yes either. So, I would recommend we lay it on the table. I'd like to do a little more research before I make that decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guest. I do share some of the concerns that my colleagues are raising. You have to realize that we do have to look out for the residents of our community. You had mentioned the emissions were five percent of what was allowed by FCC. What's the amount that FCC allows?
Don't know that actually.
Okay, but this is five percent or whatever that number would be?
Correct.
Okay. Where is... The notice that was pointed out, where exactly is that going to be located on the pole? At what level?
So, on page... I don't know if you have the copy of the small plan.
Like a height level, would it be?
No, I just wanted to... So, for anyone who has the plan that they handed out, on sheet six-point-oh, it does tell you where the sign is affixed, three to four feet below the antenna itself. So, in this case, it would be about the...
Okay, so it's way up. It's about twenty-seven feet near?
Twenty-seven, twenty-six foot level, yeah.
Okay. So, no one's going to be seeing that posting anyway? It's just basically there because FCC says you have to post something?
Right.
Okay. And then, as far as the equipment that I'm looking at on this pole, looks like there's four junction boxes or something along those lines, something running down the side of the pole. Is everything above ground level, or is there anything in the
Other than, you know, other than the conduit to run power, and that obviously goes even the ground and then underneath, the lowest point is just about eleven feet.
That lowest junction box is about eleven feet?
Yeah, the middle of that junction box is at eleven feet, so, you know, ninety...
And the last question and a half to you is, how long would something like this take to install on a pole?
In terms of actual construction, not very long, you know, a day or two or three at most. The actual construction time period, in terms of making sure you get, you know, any necessary inspections or anything, usually, and it's semi-dependent, you know, on inspectors, schedules, and things like that, overall, it's about twelve days.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much.
No further questions. You are excused. Please do not leave the chambers, though, in case we need to call you back, okay? Yes, all right. Please don't leave the chambers. This is... Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, this is a public hearing. Anyone that is interested in speaking in favor or opposed to this petition is allowed to come forward and speak. If you just want to give your name, you can also do that, too. So, allow us three times in each part, if you would like to speak on this matter. So, to the audience, is there... Does anybody want to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody want to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone to speak in favor of this petition? Hearing none. I'll close that part of the hearing. Does anyone want to speak opposed to this petition? Yes, would you like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Patrick Thistle. I reside at thirty-three Mohan Street in Everett. I'm in the butt of the proposal.
And the young lady?
I'm Paula Thistle. I live at thirty-three Mohan Street, and I'm also in the butt of Say it again. I'm Paula Thistle, and I live at thirty-three Mohan Street, and I'm also in the butt of the proposal, and I oppose it.
Thank you. Okay, sir?
My thoughts are, we're the same as what was brought up by the councilman, very eloquently. But, like, this is a... Like the gentleman said, it's a burgeoning new concept, and so therefore, there's like, I would presume that there's no... Like, if you were standing in front of it for ten minutes, or if you were within a range of it for a short period of time, I'm sure it meets regulations, but do they know, like, this is a residential area, like, over years and years and years, all this, you know, these radio frequencies and everything else that's on the pole, besides being, you know, aesthetically unpleasing-looking, you know, do you know, like, long-term, you know, negative to having these things, you know, in a heavily residential area? You know, I don't know. There's just... To me, there's just too much unknown, and like, I don't know. It's... Like, everything's coming so fast with speed and da-da-da, you know. I think sometimes safety gets tucked under the door, you know, so I can have five bars instead of four bars, you know, like, everything seems pretty expedient. So, I just oppose it. And that's it, Paula.
I also oppose because of health concerns. I know the gentleman said that the risks are low, but I'm not willing to gamble my children and my neighbors' health in future
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Okay, we'll go back to the call. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? And anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, hereby declare that part of the hearing closed. The subject matter is before you. Councilman Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this company appears before the city council, and, you know, I've never seen one of these signs on any pole in the city. And I want to read it, because it's kind of scary. It says, "Notice: Stay Back. Radio Frequency Energy May Exceed Exposure Limits. If questions, contact faculty owner." Now, there's no phone number, there's nothing to call anybody, but let me just say this. I don't know what things are coming to when you want your refrigerator to talk to you, and tell you you're low on milk, or whatever the situation is, or it's not running. I mean, this is getting a little ridiculous here. I'm a little old-fashioned, but this is getting out of hand. And a picture of this pole, it's not just what's on top of the pole, it's what's on the entire length of it. And it's almost the entire length, okay? There's devices there, electrical devices, then the sign's going to be on the pole. And I know this neighborhood. Council McKinnon lives one street over. It's a nice neighborhood. It's scary. It really is what we're getting to. Now, we've asked this petitioner to go to seek private venues in this community. I don't know if he has tried that, but that's what I suggest he do again. Attorney Grossman seems like a nice person, but this is not for the city. We've got problems with poles throughout this community. The Wild West days are over in Everett, that you think you can get away with things in this community. I'm not saying this company does. We've dealt with a lot of companies that have ripped us off over the years, and I really believe it's in the best interest to deny this petition. I'm glad... I think he said he found some other locations earlier when he was speaking, but then he backtracked a little on that. Council McKinnon knows the area. I believe that we should vote against this petition. No, no offense to the gentleman that's here again before us. This is not going to happen. I wouldn't want this in front of my house, okay? Or anybody's house. It's not really a good idea. Let's go... Let him go to some high-rises. I'm sure that he can make some arrangements, his company. We've got to stop this. Take a look on Nickel Street. We discussed that at the last meeting. The poles can't hold what's on there. They're bending. And I brought this up years ago. Union Street the same way. They got one of these creepy-looking things on the top of the poles over there. Enough is enough. Let's put an end to this adding to poles. We've got issues with poles, as you know. Mr. President, you're sponsoring a double pole ordinance, and we just don't get cooperation from other companies that are already here, so I don't need to send this to committee. I don't need to lay it over. I am voting no, and I won't be at any meeting that people have on this. I've already made up my mind. This company is really over the top to me. So, I'm going to vote no, and if you guys want to have a committee meeting to decide whether or not you want this monster on top of... next to your house, well, good luck. But I'm not voting for it anytime soon. Thank you.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wholeheartedly respect my colleagues' opinions, and they may, in the end, turn out to be what happens. I do think that we do need to have an open mind as a city. However, that said, I think that there are still a lot of questions out there that we need answers to. And one of them is, what is out there for medical research or data with regards to what's happening with people who have any kind of exposure? We need to know what the amount that the FCC actually allows. And then, once we know that, we can figure out what five percent's going to be. And until we know what the potential impact could be on residents in our neighborhood, we can't vote on this. So, if we're forced to take a vote tonight, it's a no, without any reservation. But I would suggest that we lay this over on the table, allow the sponsor to bring whatever research information they have, and at that point in time, if there isn't any research out there, or we still have our issues, at that point, you vote no. So, my recommendation would be that we lay this over on the table. I don't know if... I don't think two weeks is going to give the individual enough time. Perhaps a month might do it. So, I would make that into full of motion, Mr. President.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Council Capone. I was actually going to say that. We just don't have the information to vote on this tonight. We want to be fair. As a group, we should be fair to any businessperson that comes in, but this man... This gentleman needs to come with the information, and we'll make our decision at that point. So, I will second that motion.
Councilor Mangan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree one-hundred percent with Council Matusky and Council McKinnon. Council McKinnon, and I know Council Capone and DeFlorio just mentioned, won't not have enough information, but, Mr. President, you know, no disrespect for Mr. Grossman, but when you come in front of us and you're looking to do something like this, I mean, you've got to have all your facts and figures in place. I mean, for us, just to give them a courtesy to lay it over, I mean, it's the responsibility of the petitioner to have everything in place. I mean, you heard the sign that's going to go on that pole. Council McKinnon asked him, you know, "Do you have any medical data?" He said, "No." To me, it should just be a slam dunk. I'm not laying nothing over around. I mean, get over and give them the convenience. I understand if it's so important to them, you know, let them come back at another time, whether it's a month or six months from now, whatever, with a new proposal, maybe a different place, like Council Matusky said. So, I'm absolutely not in favor of laying this over, and I'm voting no. Thank you.
Councilor DiPaolatano?
Thank you. I mean, my concerns are that we're sending a message here, okay? I agree that, you know, the petitioner needs to bring all the information when it comes up. But we're all human. We've all showed up at one time or another at meetings with thinking we had information with us that we didn't have. I don't think it's a problem with letting him, you know, with carrying this over. Let's give an opportunity to answer some of the questions that have come up here. Just because we've hit him with questions that he may not have anticipated, doesn't mean that by always, he should always have that information with him. You know, we've got other businesses that are going to be coming in here, trying to, again, you know, do business here in the city of Everett. You know, we need to have an open mind. We need to at least give everybody, for the benefit of the doubt, as we accrue the information we need to make a qualified decision. And I agree, we're not ready to make a qualified decision at this point. But at the same time, I think that goes equally the other direction, is to make the decision to say no, without getting the answers to these questions, is just as much a disservice as, you know, passing it without that information. So, I'm going to be supporting that we lay this over, and let's get the information we need.
Council McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. President, to my colleagues. I agree with Council Matusky and Mangan, and I will be voting no on this tonight, reason being is because we've already heard from this gentleman. We've already voted down two other positions in the area of Ferry and Nickel Street. We've voted it down. We asked similar questions, and yet we still don't have that information. We asked it again tonight to produce the information. It's still not before us. With all due respect, he needs to bring that. If we have medical concerns, that was asked of the last time. As far as I'm concerned, we've already asked this. It didn't come. It's here now. We vote on it. To lay it over, it's a futile, you know, proposition, I think, because we've been asking and asking, and we haven't received it. So, what are we going to do? Hold it over for another meeting, and then try to get the information then, and it doesn't come again? Sorry. We've already gave them a shot. This is their second shot. They didn't have the information. We heard from the residents in the area. I'm one of them, and, I don't know, I'm having medical concerns now with the area residents. So, we didn't have the information. I'm ready to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Here's him. Council Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make this perfectly clear. This is nothing against this company. Absolutely not. And I just want to ask through you, Mr. President, to the clerk, is this something they can withdraw without prejudice? Is that the same idea? They can't come back next week with this proposal, am I right?
You can always withdraw without prejudice.
But if they don't, we vote no, they have one-year waiting period? Is that how it works?
Right. They have to wait... What is it, six months?
Is it six months?
It could be even longer. Might even be a year.
Well, I don't know. It's the same as auto body shops.
But this exact same petition.
I see. So, they can't come back next week and say, "Oh, here we are." Okay. And the other thing is, it's been stated that certain... This council is... Well, me in particular, not ready to make a qualified decision. I make a qualified... It's a common-sense decision to me. I just want to make that clear. This sign says it all. If you don't want... You're going to be kidding me. Notice: Stay Back. Radio Frequency Energy. Come on! Everett's on the move up. We don't want this kind of stuff in the city. It's ridiculous. Let them find some private places to put the machinery on, okay? Not in front of somebody's house. There's neighbors here that are concerned with health issues. That's enough for me. That's a qualified decision for Wayne Matusky, and I'm voting no, and I hope my colleagues join me. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? There's a motion on the floor to lay this over on the table to the next meeting. It was duly seconded. First meeting in October. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing done. I'm going to ask the clerk to call a roll on this one.
This is on postponing it until the... What, second?
First meeting in October.
Council Capone?
Yes.
Council Delisola?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
No.
Council Mangan?
No.
Council Matusky?
No.
Council McKinnon?
No.
Council McGlaughlin?
No.
Council Paolatano?
Yes.
Council Simonelli?
No.
Council Hamlin? Four yeas, six nays?
Four yeas, six nays. The petition has failed.
No, I don't know. Main question.
The motion finished, but you'll be in touch with him?
No, we need a motion. The only motion taken was to refer to our committees. We now need a motion for favorable action. You need no motion for favorable action. All you did there was...
Motion for favorable action?
Motion made for favorable...
Second.
Motion made and second for favorable action. Clerk will please call a roll on that one, too.
Council Capone?
No.
Thank you.
Council DeFlorio?
No.
Council DePiero?
No.
Council Mangan?
No.
Council Matusky?
No.
Council McKinnon?
No.
Council McGlaughlin?
No.
Council Paolatano?
No.
Council Simonelli?
No.
Council Hamlin?
Nope.
Zero yeas, ten nays, Mr. President.
Zero yeas, ten nays. The petition has failed. The city clerk will be in touch with you, sir. Okay. Next on the agenda is the public hearing, so will someone please make a motion? Motion made, second open public participation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, so move. Is there anyone that... Anybody sign up? Do we know?
Unappellable participation, no.
Okay. Anyone in the audience would like to talk on any subject matter that's not on our calendar?
Agenda.
Yes, Councilor?
Can we invite up Kim Auger, the president of Everett Teachers?
The what?
Kim Auger.
This is public participation?
Yes.
She doesn't need to be invited up.
I said...
You can just...
Is this who they can speak to? Yeah. Okay. I was just trying to do something. Pardon? Time is... Well, time is up to me. It's usually ten minutes to sit down if there's more. Are you going to represent everyone?
I believe two other people want to speak, but I'll come represent everyone if that's acceptable.
Well, yeah.
There's a parent that would like to speak.
You can do five minutes apiece.
Is it okay? Number twenty-six. Okay.
Name and address, please.
Kimberly Auger, Forty Woodward Street.
Okay.
Nice to see you all. So, I wasn't... So, my name is Kimberly Auger, and I reside at Forty Woodward Street. I'm a twenty-four-year veteran teacher at the Everett Public Schools, and I currently teach fifth grade at the Palin. I am the president of the Everett Teachers Association, and also a proud Everett Public School parent. My daughter, Emma, is a third-grade student at the Palin. I'm also proud that two of my former second-grade students are sitting here in front of me as members of this council right now. I urge you to vote to pass the resolution to be opposed to question two. Our superintendent and school committee were the first in the school... Were one of the first school committees in this state to pass the resolution to be opposed to question two. You've seen me here many times, many, many times, asking the city to give aid to our school department. You've always been fully supportive of the needs of our schools, and I know you will see the importance of this ballot question being voted down in November. I'm just going to give you a few talking points on why we need to vote this down. First, charter schools siphon forty... four hundred million dollars from schools across this state yearly. Just in Everett alone, last year, we lost five-point-eight million dollars to charter schools. This year, we're going to lose more than six million dollars to charter schools, just for the school year sixteen-seventeen. We cannot afford this kind of deficit, as you know. It'll affect our city, schools, and especially our students. Charter schools cannot often supply the necessary teaching and experience for our students, most especially with special needs. Most of these students often come back to the public school system, but the funding does not immediately come back to us, which leaves us in a deficit for that school year, which makes it very difficult for us to be able to continue with the other special things that we need to do. The charter schools are not governed by our local school committee, which is an elected body, as you are aware, but by a governing board of appointed people not affiliated with our city's legislature. And fourth, charter school teachers are not required to be certified, which is a huge concern for me as an educator, a parent, and especially as a union president. I could go on and on. I could sit here for hours to tell you the reasons why you need to vote this down, but I know all of you individually, and I know that you will do what's right for our school system, and especially for our city. I urge you to support this resolution and to oppose question two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person that would like to speak? Who's the next person? Like to speak on... Yes.
Hello.
Your name and address. She was very weak. You could speak for seven and a half minutes.
Oh, well, I have to come up with more to say then. My name is Laura Vega. I live at thirty-eight Carter Street, apartment three-oh-four. I live in Everett, but I'm actually a public school teacher in Malden. I also sit on the Massachusetts Association's Board of Directors. So, I drive to school every morning on Main Street, and I often end up behind an MBTA bus that has an... bus that has an advertisement on it on the back for the Pioneer Charter School. And to me, it strikes me as odd because that advertisement looks like something I would expect to see for a private school, not something that calls it itself a public school. And to me, that's the heart of the issue around question two, which is that we have public schools in Massachusetts that are fantastic. They're doing a great job of educating our students, and they have the potential to be better. And pitting them against private entities that are operating with public money is defeating the purpose of public education. We don't need to increase competition in schooling to be able to educate our kids well. We don't need to increase competition to achieve excellence for every child. In fact, competition assumes that there are going to be winners and losers. Who would those losers end up being? So rather than increase the amount of gray area between public financing and private operation of something that calls itself public, let's instead call to invest in raising our existing public schools to the greatest possible level of excellence that they should be and that they can be. So I ask you to pass a resolution against question two on the November ballot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Please come up, sir. Please, name and address, please, both of you. Name and address.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Myrlane Derozier. I'm a pastor and also the executive director of the Everett Haitian Community Center. I'm here tonight to represent the voices of 87 parents of the children in the Everett Public Schools who understand the importance of the work that our public schools are doing. And simply, we do not, as a product myself, of private school. I am not totally against charter school or against private school. What we are against for is monies taking out of, you know, our public school system, and those monies going away to charter schools to support other, other schools such as charter schools. So representing their voice tonight, I'm here to ask you fearlessly, as you have here, to really strike down number two.
Thank you. Sure?
Good evening. My name is Edwin Argueta. I live in 150 Jefferson Ave. First and foremost, I'm a parent of a 5th grader at the Kevaryan School. And that's my main motivation for organizing against question two. Some of the things that we need to take into consideration are, you know, like Reverend said, it's not just the money. It's a process. Just think about the fact that if we go forward with lifting the cap on charter schools, none of you or members of the school committee will have a say about what happens to the public schools or what happens, you know, about education in general. None of you would have that opportunity. Charter schools are run like private companies. They have CEOs. They don't have principals. They have boards of directors. Their more, their main motivation, some of them, you know, not all of them, is to make a profit. In the course of talking to other parents, who, many of whom are not here, we've discovered that, you know, some of them have even returned their kids, you know, from charter schools to public schools. Yet, the money doesn't follow the students to the public schools. It stays in the charter schools. Like Kim stated, there's, you know, something along the lines of $6.5, $6 million that Everett Public Schools will lose to charter schools in the current fiscal year. Across the state, you know, we are losing $450 million. If you lift the cap, just think about this. This is a very interesting figure. If you lift the cap, you know, on the number of charter schools that are already existing in the next 10 years, Massachusetts will lose $1 billion. That means you're going to have to make very tough decisions about, you know, anything from, you know, materials, books, you know, the way curriculum happens, to teachers, you know, staff, support, et cetera, et cetera. And again, you know, I, I, you know, like, I've heard before, I think we need to be open-minded. I think we need to, you know, understand and get the, you know, what's, what's the state? What's the real picture here? And the debate shouldn't be about are you pro charter or are you against charter? I commend parents that want their kids to do, you know, good in school, whether you're in a charter or in a public school. What's wrong is the process. The proponents of this, you know, have been found to be connected to really very particular economic interests, you know, hedge funds, you know, from New York. Walmart is funding the group that is pushing this ballot measure, you know, Family For Exonous School, Walmart Foundation. Even today, I mean, you may have heard that one of the appointees of the Baker administration, Mr. Pagan, was funding, you know, Family For Exonous Schools at the same time that he's the chair of DESI. And, you know, there's a huge conflict of interest. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think, you know, we all want to make sure that kids that go through the Everett Public Schools do, you know, the best. I mean, I don't, who knows? The next president may be coming out of the Everett Public Schools, and I'm very serious about this. Many of you have, you know, graduated from the Everett Public Schools. Why don't we talk about the 96% of kids that attend the public school system and let's make that system better? Let's not create a parallel and an equal system that only, you know, supports a small amount of children. So I, I urge you to, you know, take a stand and support a resolution that says, you know, we're voting, we're against, you know, lifting the cap on charter schools. Thank you.
That was probably the best public participation we had. You still have 20 seconds. I'll have a motion to close.
Excuse me, should I wait to 20 seconds or?
No, no. Motion made second.
The motion is to close public participation.
Close public participation, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, so move.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to wave, like to wave the rolls and motion that we take. Item number 26, while these thoughts are fresh in our minds.
I second that.
Motion made second, take item 26 from the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Counselor McGlaughlin first, Counselor Mangan next. Got it. Got to read the other first.
Item number 26, resolution specified Counselors Mangan, McGlaughlin, DePiero, and Delasola, that the Everett City Council is opposed to question number two on the November ballot, if pass the funding of Everett Public Schools be severely affected by the lifting of the cap on the expansion of charter schools.
Counselor Mangan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in order to save time, like I said, we heard it very eloquently from members of the Teachers Association, also residents in our community, so that so eloquently put it the way it is. And, you know, certainly having my three children grow, graduate from the Everett Public Schools, I know what they offer, and they offer a great education. I'm not against charter schools whatsoever. This is a free country, but I am, in terms of the funding mechanism, I just look at, and I use it as one example, we have the Devon School down the street here, as everybody knows. And unfortunately, we have some children in there here that are at that school for particular reasons. Charter schools don't have things like that, like I said. And it's, and it's tough, you know, unfortunately, because kids do have behavioral issues and stuff like that. And we have a dedicated, dedicated group of teachers that are down there that are working. So I always want, if you're going to do the lift the cap and new funding, I think everything's got to be equal, as they said. I mean, there's no oversight by us. There's no oversight by a school committee. I mean, it is, for the most part, run like a corporation. And like I said, it is not, we don't have a lot of say in that, and, and I just don't think it's a level playing field. So I certainly, that's why I put this on the calendar, and I hope people will, I know I had some other councils sponsor with me, but I'd like to make it unanimous if it's, if it's possible here tonight, but I certainly, I hope people support me in voting no on question number two in November. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor McGlaughlin, do you want to say anything? Counselor McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, I, as a product of the Everett Public School Systems and one of the former students that Ms. Auger spoke of this evening, proudly stand in support of voting no on question two. As you and I had the opportunity last week to visit a classroom at the Paulin School together and to see the great work that they do in our public schools every day, I also have friends on the other side of this issue. One of my dearest friends has a child in charter schools currently. It's not about again, being in favor or against charter schools. It's about making the playing field fair for everybody across the board, and currently it's not. And if this were to pass, it would get even dramatically worse, not better for the playing field. So I, again, respectfully ask that my colleagues join us this evening in voting unanimously to support voting no on question two, and I know I look forward to working hard to defeat this question outside of these chambers. Thank you.
Counselor DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to reiterate what a few of my colleagues just said.
I had my hand up after.
I'm a recent graduate of the Everett Public Schools. I graduated in 2013. I saw on a daily basis the barriers that many of these dedicated individuals in the audience face every day. Public schools don't get to pick and choose what kids they educate. They, they face the challenges and they take them by the horns. Charter schools offer great services for kids that, that attend them, but in this case, separate is not equal. We give a lot of public money to essentially a private company with no control over, regulation over it for that matter. So I also urge my colleagues to support this resolution. And just as a side note, I always thought Ms. Auger really meant I was her favorite 2nd grade student until I heard her say it to someone else last night. But that's another issue. Thank you.
Counselor Polatano?
Thank you. Well, I wholeheartedly support this, this resolution. I compliment my colleagues for getting involved in this. I mean, I'm, I'm a parent of four children that have graduated Everett High, three in the special ed program. You know, I'm, I've seen the results in my family from, from 1st grade on, well, even earlier, of the, of the benefits of having a dedicated, experienced, committed, you know, education system. You know, when we, so we, you know, we, we brandy this phrase Everett's pride is Everett Schools around, but what does it really mean? It means that we take pride in the quality and of, of, of education that we make available, not only to our kids, but the efforts of our educators in that same system. I oppose anything that diminishes that ability. It's so difficult in this day and age where our children have so many distractions, so many things that move them off of a, of a quality education. And education's our only competing point in the world marketplace. I don't oppose the charter school system, but it's a public, it's a privately funded group. And if they're starting to rely on public funds, then something's seriously wrong there because one of the speakers had made a point. It's not a competition, because in a competition, somebody loses. And the losing party, regardless of who it is, is our children. We can't afford to have that. So I will be, I will be voting against, you know, the ballot question, and I will be supporting this resolution tonight. And I would ask if my colleagues, how many made a motion, that it be unanimous? If it's not unanimous, I would ask that they add me to this piece, okay? Because I, I fully believe that this is the way to go. We cannot afford to take any more hits in the education system. It's hard enough. Let's not make it more difficult. Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had five sons that graduated from Everett High School. So this isn't a question about education. This is a question about charter school, okay? I'm not against charter schools at all. I believe that people have the right to choose where their kids want to go to school, like some kids go to Catholic school. The point is that this question is saying that when, that they're taking funds away from us. So let's get this straight, and I want the audience to understand, I'm not against charter schools, and I'm definitely not against the Everett School System. I never have been, and I never will be. I know the great work that they do and the great work that they've always done. But we just want to understand that the question is that we are losing money. The public schools are losing money over the charter school, but we really don't have anything in front of us to tell us that. What, what is the schools? I mean, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm just not educated enough on the question, and I have no problem with voting on it tonight, but I don't vote just to vote because there's an audience and trying to make people happy. I have to vote based on the facts. So the question on the ballot is to open the, lift the cap on the charter school. Is that correct? That's what the question is on question two. Now, as far as the finances go, we've never been educated on that. I mean, I'm going to vote yes on this tonight, don't get me wrong, because honestly, it doesn't mean anything. But if we vote yes or no, it's what the people do in November that counts. So that's where the work has to go. The work is on the ballot. So I could vote yes tonight, I have no problem on it, but I still would like to get an education on it. So maybe it's something I'll put on the agenda for next time. Thank you.
Counselor McKennan?
A quick point of reference, Mr. President, through you, if you could get that, is the amount per student that is going to be lifted over the cap. That's what I think my colleague's looking for. And if we could have that, maybe if someone in the audience might know that, they could just say it, but it would be per student. That's what we would like to know. If it's like, say, 5,000, 7,000, or maybe one of the sponsors would know. I don't know.
I can, I can look that up. But before we do that, would there happen to be anybody in the audience that could answer that question?
I don't have that in my mouth.
Okay.
I just have the programs to find out if you can get that out.
Thank you. Okay. No, we're just, no, we're just going to vote on that. I just wanted to see if anybody could answer that question. Okay. Motion made and seconded.
Mr. President, before we do that, I'd like to offer, like I said, I know Counselor Polatano is interested. I'd like to offer my colleagues a chance to make this a unanimous, if everyone wants to be a, just a resolution. Again, the school committee did it. It came to us. I'm asking the members of the council, you know, to do the same thing in solidarity. And I'd like to have it unanimous, but I'm certainly, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not here to force anybody to do something that they don't want to do. So I'd like to make a motion that we-
Make a motion.
Make it unanimous.
You can't make a motion for unanimous because you're asking, you're voting for everybody else. Let's vote, let's vote as we decide to vote.
Okay, thank you. Amending. Thank you, Mr. Counselor Capone.
All in favor of the resolution that the council is opposed to question number two on the ballot, November ballot? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You have your unanimous decision. Thank you very much. Thank you, folks. We will revert back to-
Mr. President?
Items six and seven collectively.
Oh, good. You're reading my mind. If we could, could we suspend the rules, take items six and seven collectively?
Oh, six and seven? Oh, six and seven?
Six and seven collectively.
Six and seven, okay, six and seven. Motion made in second to take items six and seven from the agenda collectively. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. The ayes have it. Six and seven is before us. For the clerk, oh, you changed.
He got younger and better looking. What happened?
The clerk got a little younger. I can read those pieces, counselors.
Nothing on the floor. Wait, wait. You got six and seven?
Counselors, the pieces, item six and seven. Item six is a petition for lodging house license from Carruthers Communities, Inc., DBA, the Bill Moore House at 76 Norwood Street. Item number seven is order from Counselor President Hanlon, a petition for lodging house license from Carruthers Communities, Inc., DBA Hancock Hotel at 19 Hancock Street.
Counselor McGlaughlin, sorry. Outset? Outset? Okay. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was on the agenda before, went into committee, and we had that committee meeting this evening. I just wanted to update my colleagues. What had happened is the reason why I was put in committee is the applications were delayed and the license at time period expired. We had found out in committee that the petitioner had filled out paperwork, has it on file with Clerk's Office, but there were some issues in between, so we weren't able to issue the license. They had to take care of some, some activities that had to be fixed. I'm told that everything is up to date, ready to go, and Clerk's Office has all the information. So given that, I would ask for favorable action on these pieces.
Both pieces?
Both pieces.
On item six and seven. Motion made in second for favorable action on the petition of the lodging house license of 76 Norwood and 19 Hancock. Any further discussion? Oh, Counselor McKinnon. I'm sorry, I had you down.
Yeah, it's, that's okay. Through you, Mr. President. I spoke, I also spoke to a representative from the police department as well, and they urged us to actually have favorable action on this, reason being is because the number of police calls to both these houses has declined, and also they are working with them to actually clean them up. So that's what I just wanted to add to that.
Sorry, sorry, apologize. Any further discussion? Hearing on favorable action for both items, the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delisso, Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Mangan?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Hanlon?
Yes.
And registered Counselor DeFlorio is a yes. That is ten ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Both orders have passed, the petitions have been granted. We revert back to item number two.
Could we please take items 19, 24, and 25 collectively?
19, 24, and 25. Motion made in second to take items 19, 24, and 25.
Mr. President, as a sponsor, I'll, you know, I just want 19 and 24, then I'll speak on 25. Is that okay with you?
I have a motion on the floor to take three of them collectively.
I will take them all, okay.
You can speak on whichever one you'd like.
I'm sure where we are. All in favor, taking the three votes collectively?
Aye.
Second, aye. All opposed? So moved, okay. Clerk will read items 19.
24, 25, yep. Okay. Okay, counselors. Item 19 is a resolution offered by Counselor Wayne Matusky, a resolution regarding airplane noise levels on July 20th. Item 24 is another resolution by Counselor Matusky that Massport Board of Directors be informed that, once again, more airplane noise levels have been unreasonable on August 17th with airplane noise every 60 seconds. And item number 25 is a resolution by Counselor Matusky, airport community advisory spokesperson supply report from last year on Massport airplane noise complaints.
Thank you. We'll start with item number 19. Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 19 and 24 are going to be referred to the Massport Director. Now, I've asked, the city clerks in charge are giving these copies of these resolutions to the director, am I right? We have never received any comments from them?
Nothing.
This is like the fourth, the fifth time.
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, on July 20th, that's, that's the number 19. I just want to read the report. I made a complaint, and I got this in the mail recently. You were affected by jet departures from Runway 33L in use with northwesterly winds with the gusts reaching 18 knots, et cetera. Historically, Runway 33L is used at a higher level from October to early April due to prevailing winds. However, changes in wind patterns and so forth, it goes on and on. It's a bunch of mumbo jumbo, and I just want to be on the safe side, because as I said at the last meeting, there was a lawyer involved now, there's 12 residents that have signed on to, due to health issues concerning them, we are going to sue these residents and myself, Massport, for causing sleep disorders, which I am suffering from now. And I don't take this very lightly, and I know that I spoke to the councilwoman earlier that I'd be very brief on these issues. Now, at the last meeting, I brought up, now, maybe we've got some communication, as you all remember, Mr. President, I asked that the, I want to report on the noise monitoring antenna on Bell Rock Street. Do we have anything from the building department? No, the elect, I sent an email to Mr. Connors. I've not received a response back yet. Okay, see, this is the problem I'm having. This is a very serious issue to me, and it should be to the rest of the council, where there is legal matters taking place at this point. I need something from the building department, okay? I'm not fooling around anymore. Ms. McCory puts this on the agenda. I take the time to call it in. We have no results. For the man to go down there to see if that antenna's working, the electrical department, somebody has to take. Now, what do you do, Mr. Clerk, when, after the last, did you call the building department, or is it Ms. McCory's job? I just want to be clear. No, I make the request. And you made the request? Request was made. And it's been a month since our last meeting? Right. Mr. President, I don't know what to tell you, but, you know, I'll keep putting these on the agenda until I get the information that I request. It's not fair to me, and you, as the president, should understand this. It's frustrating to get any, and item number 25, I remember watching a meeting last year, and Massport had sent a communication saying 24 people complained in the whole city during the course of the year, and I dispute that. I need that information at the next meeting. I guess, why don't we, if I could, Mr. President, we're just going to refer items 19 and 24 to the Massport Director, just so it's on file. Certified letter.
Thank you, Counselor McKinnon. Counselor, on item 24 and 25, we're going to send to the Massport Director. Are you looking for a specific question to be answered by them?
No, 19 and 24, I just want them to be aware that on these two particular dates, noise level was really exceeding, okay? 19 and 24.
I'm going to ask our clerk to make sure that when you send that to him, say that we want you to be informed and know about, make sure we get it, be clear.
Well, this is what I've been advised by the legal people that are on, on board with this, and they're doing it pro bono, I might add, because they have a business in the city. And item number 25, airport community advisory spokesman, why don't we add the antenna debacle to that whole thing and ask the city clerk to get the building department to respond at the next meeting? Maybe the Massport's not aware that this antenna is working or not, and it's totally in the dark, and maybe it's in the wrong location. It's on Bell Rock Street, but I believe that the noise level down in that area is very high also. So I just want to find out if that antenna works, and if it has been working, and by our electrical department. So I don't know whose property it's on. Is that city property? That belongs to Massport. Oh, they, they own that? Okay. And I don't want to seem negative here. I just want to get results for the people that I represent, the neighborhoods that I represent. And if they shift it over just a couple of quarter mile, you're going to hear it down on your neck of the woods. And the people, you know what they say, the greasy wheel gets the oil? Well, if enough people complain in a certain neighborhood, they're going to shift it like they did a few years ago, and you're going to get bombed with phone calls, okay? Forget about sitting on your porch. And these particular dates, we know what we're going to do. We're going to send a letter. So I don't want to drag this out, but it's very important to me, I'm not putting this on the calendar for the sake of having something on the calendar. I want results, and I want to get information, because Everett is being impacted. And so with that, Mr. President, 19 and 22 to the, 24 rather, to the Director of the Massport, and item number 25, that our city clerk actually find out if the building department is going to check on that. And I'll speak to Mr. Sousa. I'd like him to appear at the next meeting. So 25 can be laid over to our next meeting with anticipation of what that antenna's doing, and Mr. Sousa should actually appear. Thank you.
Any second on those motions?
Second.
Okay, second. Motion made in second. Item 24 and 25 will be referred to the Massport Director for his.
No, 19 and 22.
24, sorry.
19 and 24.
To the Massport Director for information. Number 25 will be referred to the city clerk to be laid over until our next meeting, and also ask the elected department to have any further information on this matter. Okay. All in favor?
Thank you. And Mr. Sousa appeared too.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Yeah, let's see. Are we up to number two? We're up to number two, okay. I don't read the next, next item on the.
Item number two is a response by Counselor John Hanlon, his president.
Hold on, hold on. Okay.
Requesting to suspend the rules and take items 21, 22, and 23 collectively.
21, 22, and 23.
21, 22, and 23.
Motion made in second to take items 21, 22, and 23 collectively. All in favor? All opposed? Items 21, 22, 23 before us. Clerk will please read the three items.
Item number 21 is a resolution sponsored by Counselor Simonelli, request city engineer Mr. William O'Rourke to inspect the pool water buildup in the street near 134 Nickel Street when it rains out. Number 23 is a resolution sponsored by Counselor Stephen Simonelli to set up a memorial marker for Joseph R. King. 24 is, I'm sorry, 21, a resolution sponsored by Counselor Stephen Simonelli to get an update on the Mount Washington Street retaining wall.
Okay. On item 21, the motion is to invite Eric Dimas, City CFO, and Bill O'Rourke, City Engineer, to the next meeting, September 26th, for an update.
Second motion. Okay. Motion 26 to get an update, okay. A motion is made in second to get an update on the Mount Washington Street retaining wall. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? So moved. You have referred. Item 22.
On item 22, motion is to invite city engineer Mr. William O'Rourke to appear at the next meeting, September 26th, and to provide us a recommendation at that meeting.
Motion made in second to ask Mr. O'Rourke to appear at our next meeting to discuss this matter. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Say nay. The ayes have it. We have referred to Mr. O'Rourke for our next meeting. Clerk of number 23.
Regarding item number 23.
I'm sorry, you already read it.
I think he's already read. Joe King is a city counselor for many years in War II and also in the Everett community. He's loved by all and respectful, a generous man, and he'll be a man of many, or excuse me, few words, but when he did say something, it was something that everybody listened to, and he was also a very witty man. We were looking for something to, something appropriate to honor him with. An example would be a public building, a park, or a street. Motion is to refer to Public Safety and Public Service Committee for their input.
Counselor McGlaughlin, sorry.
I want to applaud my colleague for putting this item on the calendar tonight. Counselor King was a friend to all of us in these chambers. When I was first elected in 2011, he'd always throw you a mitt across the room. You knew he liked you when he gave you one of those. He'd always give you good advice when he seen you on the street, and he was always a warm welcome man with a handshake and a smile. I applaud you for putting this on the calendar, and I look forward to working to make sure that this becomes a reality, Counselor. Thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that we're taking a little time, and we may end up going down the train line with this, but Joe was that great of a guy, you know? Those of who had the pleasure to serve with him knew how much fun it could be in the chamber when he was here, and I know that most of us had the honor of being considered his friend. He was a wonderful man. He will be missed, and he does deserve some tribute that's befitting the gentleman. So I applaud my colleague for this piece as well, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Counselor Mangan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I congratulate Counselor Simonelli. This is a fantastic piece. Joe was whatever it was all about. I mean, he was a gentleman, and like I said, he, but he was always about moving the city of Everett forward. I mean, he was, he did so much for, you know, so many, and like I said, in a lot of quiet ways, and certainly, I just, you know, I just want to point it out, like I said, and I know the clerk can't speak here, but they are clerk of committees, but, you know, he was certainly instrumental in his, in helping him, you know, many years ago and so forth. So that's how Joe was. He didn't, he didn't want the pat on the back or anything, but he was just, he's someone that, you know, could get, get things done, and he's sorely going to be missed, and Counselor, great job with this piece. Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. President, through the counsel. Counselor, I want to commend you on this. This is a great piece. What I remember about Joe was, he was a golf, avid golf player, and he always would say, "When it's breezy, you must swing easy." So, but Joe was a great guy. I spoke to his daughter, gave my condolences to her, and he will be missed, so I want to say, great piece. Thank you, Simi, for putting this on.
Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you. Yeah, I remember Joe made a strong impression on me when he, when I first got elected to city council. I was, I grew up, I was friends with his daughter, didn't really know him very well other than being the father of some friends of mine, but I remember, and this piggyback comment that was made earlier about him being a man of few words, one of the first thing myself and a few of my colleagues when we were new to the council proposed was, just what we're sitting here, abolishing the bicameral system. Of course, Joe, I remember Joe standing up, looking very measured, and the first words out of his mouth was hogwash. That was Joe King. He spoke his mind, you know? Years later, we talked about that, you know? We, for years, we were friends. He always gave me good political advice. You know, we, when we disagreed, we agreed to disagree, but that was the kind of man he was, very generous. He will be very sorely missed, and I think this is a great piece, so I fully support whatever form this takes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also in, in support. Joe King was great, and when I first became the counselor, he was very, very good to me, gave me a lot of advice, and I believe it's paid off. So he will be greatly missed, and thank you, Counselor Simonelli, for putting this on.
Okay, the motion was refer to government operations. Second, please. Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
[crosstalk]
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of referring to government operations?
All opposed? Refer to government operations. Okay. That was 21, 22, and 23. Clerk will read. Now we're back.
Motion made to suspend the rules and take item number 11.
What item?
11.
11.
And also, let's see here, because I see them in the audience.
Okay.
Take item 11.
All in favor, taking item 11?
All opposed.
Item 11 before us. Clerk will please read item 11.
Item number 11, resolution sponsored by Counselor John Lee McKinnon, resolution regarding the street grading system and the location of Ashton and Cumberland Streets therein.
Could we have Bill O'Rourke before us, please?
Mr. O'Rourke?
I'm sorry, this is number 11?
Yes.
Or is this number? Goodness gracious, number nine?
Number 11.
Could you read it again? If you have time, already.
Item number eleven, a resolution regarding the street grade system and the location of Ashton and Cumberland Streets therein.
Through you, Mr. President, to Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. O'Rourke, on this, on this piece here, what I was looking for, there was a grading system that we used to have, I know it's a numbered system, and there was an old numbered system, and then should be a new numbered system that was going to be coming out.
I'm sorry, councillors, I'm at a loss. Is this new business? No, this is old business.
This has held over for, I think, two meetings now? Because I was not at the last meeting.
Regarding the street grade system? Pavement management system? Street grade system? I'm, I'm at a loss, councillors, I apologize, I'm not familiar with this issue.
Item number eleven?
Item number eleven, yeah.
Come to the page.
Let me just, I'll run it through.
Please, thanks, thank you.
Mr. O'Rourke, what we used to have is, it used to be a grading system per street, and they used to grade them accordingly to, you know, age of street, deterioration of the street.
Got it.
And stuff like that.
Right.
So, what we went to was a numbered system now. We had an old number system that was in place, they were doing a new numbered system that was in place.
Right.
I wanted to see if that was updated yet, and if we could actually have an answer to when Ashton and Cumberland would be done.
Oh, sure, okay. So, we have worked with a consultant on the existing pavement management system. We've entered a contract with World Tech, and they're in the process of updating citywide our pavement management system. And the pavement management system is a grading system, grading system from zero to one hundred, one hundred being a perfect road, zero being a completely failed road, and I anticipate within that system, there will be grading numbers on those particular streets.
Okay.
I have not seen the results of that work as of yet, but I am making a request to get a partial submittal on that grading system, and I can certainly add these two streets to the request.
Yeah, these, I had this piece, not to cut you short, sorry, but what I did was, I had requested these a couple of months back.
Sure.
And they were promised that they were going to be done, and they still, to date, have not been, have not been done yet. So, I was just wondering when maybe there would be a timeframe that these would get done.
I can certainly look into that for, for you.
And also, if you could, if we have the new, the new numbering system, the new grading system for the streets?
Yep.
Could we get a copy for all my colleagues as well as myself?
It's a possibility, sure.
Okay. Yeah, just so that we have it, so that we can go over it and prioritize the way that we used to prioritize these streets as well.
Shouldn't be a problem, sure.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Councillor, thanks. Excuse me, Councillor, thanks, thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. On the resolution?
You might want to stay for. Stay for, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
On the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, could we suspend? Can we take a vote here?
What I'm going to do is, I'm going to send this to Mr. O'Rourke and request that we have the numbered system, updated numbered system, come to all, the whole council, as well as the grading system for these two streets and what a timeframe would be.
That was the motion?
Yes.
Okay, second on that motion?
Second.
Motion made in second, refer to Mr. O'Rourke to have the numbered system referred to be delivered to the, to the City Council numbers.
Mr. Chairman, we have, I'm sorry.
Second, please?
Second.
Second, okay. No further, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the resolution has passed, we have referred to Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you.
We have a petition in the audience.
Excuse me.
Actually.
Did you say number four?
Number four.
Yeah.
And also, number twenty.
Okay, motion made in second.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, well, the City Engineer is still sitting here, he's also here for item number nine.
Correct.
Can we take that item and, until we can put that, get this off the agenda?
Someone has to make a motion for it.
I've been trying to, so I'd like to motion that we waive, that we waive the rules and, suspend the rules and take item number nine.
Motion made in second, take item number nine. Any discussion, I mean, any, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item nine is now before you, with a clerk, please read item number nine.
Item number nine, resolution sponsored by Councilor Peter Polatano, City Engineer Peter speaking to provide a copy of the original Traffic Commission study for Church and Webster Street to the City Council.
Counselor Polatano?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. O'Rourke.
Good evening.
It sounded like you came with this information.
I have this information.
Okay, that's, that's why I wanted to get it, get it from you before we let you know. Could you please give us an update?
Sure. So, the commission, the, the councillors are looking for a Traffic Commission study. I learned that a Traffic Commission study was not performed, what it was, was a sketch, it was an idea from our planning department, they put a sketch together, they brought it before the Traffic Commission, the Traffic Commission said, "It's acceptable, let's go ahead and build this," and we built that. This is the current configuration of Webster and Church rerouting traffic with our island out by the Church. Since we last discussed this in the spring, we had our budget season, and in our CIP for seventeen, we have, we will have some budget to hire a traffic consultant to review the traffic movements and the configuration of Webster and Church Street. I recommended this a while back, I put in for this, for this money on the CIP, because a traffic consultant does this every day. While we could do this in-house, traffic consultants do this all the time, and I'd rather rely on experts that are doing this every day. We should have the money for performing this study soon, and we can certainly hire a consultant within the coming months to develop a study on the configuration and the traffic flow and so on.
Okay. And when we're, when we're doing this through a traffic consultant, does that kind of shift some of the liability in the event of, I know when we were talking in the spring about this, this liability was briefly touched on, of whether or not we're making a decision to do a certain traffic pattern as opposed to an expert recommendation in the study?
I think the study will discuss the existing traffic pattern, provide some pros and cons of remaining with the current study, and they'll provide some alternatives to us, and provide some additional pros and cons, and we can make a collective decision on whether we want to leave the existing pattern we have right now, or if we wanted to decide to spend some more money and make a change. My opinion, if I may, is that the configuration is fine, except for the island. An island, for a truck movement that wants to turn left on, on, at the top of the hill, the incline there, he will go over a piece of curbing. I'd like to configure the curbing such that a truck will not overtop that curbing, go onto the sidewalk, and potentially ruin the grass that we have in that island.
But now, if the traffic, if a truck coming up School, Church Street?
Yep.
Were allowed to go straight across as, and not need to take that curb?
Yep.
Why would you need to alter the island?
Because if that?
See, the alteration, the island only occurs if you continue to have traffic take that hard right, and then decide whether to go left or right.
Mm-hmm.
My experience has been, and because I use that daily, is that it's creating a continual traffic hazard, because you have people coming into that portion of the street, and they don't know which side of the line to come on, you've got cars coming right at you, you've got cars coming down Webster on the opposite side of the line, because they don't know any better.
Right.
Now, if, again, if we're able to route all the Church Street traffic from Broadway straight up to Linden uninterrupted, it nullifies the need for that turn and that traffic, and that, that change to the, to the island.
Right. I'd like to defer the traffic consultant that takes a look at all these different alternatives.
All right.
I have my opinions, but I'd rather have the traffic expert.
Absolutely.
Answer these questions.
When would you expect to have some results back from that?
Perhaps November and December.
Of this year?
The money won't be available for another month or so, perhaps into, more so into December, I think is more appropriate timeframe to take a look at results.
All right, thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin, please.
Through you, Mr. President, Mr. O'Rourke. How does a decision get made, if there has been no traffic study put in place, how does a decision get made of how to change the traffic pattern of a street or an intersection as such in this case?
That's a great question. I was told a sketch was put together in March of two thousand and fifteen. I wasn't here in March of two thousand and fifteen. Spring of two thousand and fifteen was when that sketch was put together, brought before the Traffic Commission, no objections were made, and modifications were made. I don't have the answer to that question.
I'm just trying to figure, I mean, some guy woke up one day and decided we're going to draw a sketch and present it to the Traffic Commission and go forward to, without any, any real thoughtfulness of, of traffic, and it is sort of confusing out there, as Councilor Polatano said, because the line, the pattern of the lines are, are quite confusing in that small area, but I'm just concerned that there has been other cases like this across the city where other traffic patterns have changed without any real thoughtfulness of consideration to the residents, so that's why I was asking where, where it comes from, or how it's kind of determined, presented. I know the Traffic Commission approves it, but where it actually founds from, where it starts from.
I don't have the answer to your question.
That's okay.
And I'm very cognizant of thoughts such as that, and I personally would not make a decision to build something without referring to an expert in the field.
Exactly, and that's kind of where I was thrown off by when you said that.
Your point is taken.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. President, Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. O'Rourke, on this, right, we had corrected some of the problem down there, I believe it was with the church that was on that one area?
That is correct, councillor, we did make some modifications to the striping, we took some black paint, and we painted over the striping to eliminate some of the striping out there.
Is, has the changes that were made, did they, are they favorable changes, or have we had any?
Personally, I feel they're favorable. I drive by it quite often, and they look fine to me, I have not heard any comments, adverse comments about our modifications that we made.
Mm-hmm.
But that's just my opinion.
Basically, it was coming from the church, correct, that was on that street?
The church was dictating we eliminate as much striping as we possibly could, and we, I, I feel that we did do that. I did not want to eliminate more striping, because I felt that was a public safety hazard.
Yeah. Okay, now, would, would this be considered if we go straight up, straight up the street in one way, and then straight down from Linden a different way, and then, is that what, that that's maybe possible, or is that what they were looking for? I'm trying to rehash what they were looking for.
I'm trying to rehash it, too, we had a bunch of ideas that floated around in that meeting, and I, I can't fully recall, but what I do clearly recall is they did not like all the striping, it was unsightly, and they wanted it all removed, and for that, for public safety reasons, we couldn't accommodate that request.
Okay, so we'll just wait on the?
Traffic study, sure.
Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the traffic study, are you doing just Church Street and Webster Street, or are you doing the whole city?
No, I think just Church Street and Webster Street, the configuration that we currently have, and potential alternatives.
Well, instead of doing traffic studies on bits and pieces, why don't we just find a way to get the whole city done, because unfortunately, I was told that it's hard to bring in growth with all these cities, all these streets being one ways, and because they're all one ways, we're bringing all the traffic onto Ninety-Nine and Main Street. So, if that's an issue, and that's an ongoing problem, because I think that's a problem with the city, we, we do one study today, another study tomorrow, another study tomorrow, we spend millions of dollars, and then the third study tells you not to do what the first study told you to do. So, why don't we just do it once and for all, do it right, and find a way to get the whole city done, especially with the new casino coming in?
I like the idea, for right now, we have a limited pool of money, we're going to be allowed to do a traffic study. The traffic study you suggest might be much more costly than the funds that we have, and for that reason?
So, maybe it's a good idea to put in the capital improvement plan?
Perhaps, perhaps.
Get a price, and put it in the capital improvement plan.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
No further discussion, Mr. O'Rourke, thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, on the motion?
Thank you, councillor.
Does the chairman like to hold this over until our first meeting in December, and we ask that the City Engineer comes up and give us an update from the results of the traffic study?
Motion made in second?
Second.
Second motion made in second, to be tabled until the December first meeting, have the results of the traffic study referred back to the City Council. All in favor? All opposed, so moved.
Mr. Chairman, could we please take items number four?
Motion made in second, take item number four from the agenda.
Number twenty.
All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it, clerk will please read item number four.
Item number four is petition sponsored by Councilor Johnna Fehlman, as president, a petition for an awning from Panda Electrical Services Incorporated at one sixty-five Main Street to recover existing awning structure.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Is this black and white?
It's a panda.
It's a panda.
Black and white, yes.
Well, I know Main Street has a lot of black and white on, so I don't have an issue with it, so I'll be, I'll be voting favorable.
Favorable action.
Motion made in second, favorable action, any further discussion? All in favor, please, we call, clerk will please, six, five, saying aye.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DiPiero?
Yes.
Counselor Mangan?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero nays, president.
I'm starting to look.
Pass the petition.
Suspend the rule, take item number twenty, please.
Petition ordered.
It's a petition.
Petition. Okay.
Item number twenty?
Twenty. Yes, are there any more? We haven't taken up the, let's see. Motion made in second, take item twenty from the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. One aye has it, one aye is not a majority, can I get another vote for aye? Thank you. Item twenty, clerk will please?
Item number twenty is an order sponsored by Councilor Johnna Fehlman, as president, according to provisions, section twelve, the zoning ordinances of the city of Everett. City Council is hereby adding new section thirty-two by adding the following language, section thirty-two inclusionary zoning.
Mr. Chairman, we have a gentleman in the audience that?
I think the proper motion is to refer it to the planning board, it's a zoning change.
Committee, right?
Planning board.
Plan board, yeah.
Yeah.
We have someone here.
On the motion, I'd just like to be brief here. Counselor Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have read the mayor's proposal, I had it here somewhere, and I think this is a, a very good mechanism for the development that's going on in Everett. As a member of the, a former member of the Everett Housing Board, I know the need for lower income units in this city. We haven't built anything in many, many years, you know, we've got Glendale Towers, Woody Drive, Golden Age Circle, and so forth, and if it wasn't for people like Sal Sacro and his buildings, we really have very limited low-income housing in sixty-six Main Street. We have new development coming in at the very, and the mayor's right, we need to accommodate Everett residents, that's, that's the key here. I want, I hope that the, we can, you know, make this for Everett people that would like to move into some of these newer buildings, I'm not sure it's in the plans there, but it's so important, the rents today are really skyrocketing, and with, you know, the proximity to Wellington Station or Sullivan Station is very close, and not to mention the new casino and so forth, so, and it's my understanding there's going to be a new train line, I think it's the Purple Line, right near Restaurant Depot, so a lot's happening here, and we must remember to take care of the people that live here. We don't have enough housing units, and I think the mayor's on the right track, there's four or five other communities that actually have this mechanism. When issuing a permit, the ten percent of those units being built will be for people who are on a fixed income or lower income, and I think it's a wonderful thing to have in place. So, with that, I, I support the mayor's vision here, thank you.
Counselor Mangan?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just echo what Councilor Matuski says, I won't, just be brief, and I agree one hundred percent, I think it's a great proposal, thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Yeah, I also would echo on that, I've been talking about this for a couple of years now, so I'm glad we're finally getting there, because the state does mandate it, and it puts a lot of burden on existing housing when you have new development come in that doesn't take that in consideration, so I also support this, I'm glad to see it here.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Mr. President, my question to you is, all of my colleagues, I'm sure, are on board with this proposal and this idea, why, does it have to go to planning, or can we?
It's a zoning ordinance.
So, we can't send it to our own zoning subcommittee, and?
Go to zoning, then.
No, it has to go to the planning board, the planning board turns around, the planning board will do a public hearing, they will hold a public hearing and make their recommendation back to us, and then the, we will hold a public hearing and vote as well.
Okay, listen.
Favorable action, refer to the planning board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have referred to the planning board, item number twenty. Item number, go ahead, Mr. Capone, item number two? Oh, thank you very much.
Oh, sure.
Clerk will read item number two.
In order sponsored by Councilor Johnna Fehlman, as president, to accept donation totaling five hundred and eighty-four dollars to the City of Everett Council on Aging Account, hopefully I can find it, there we go. $15 from the Goodwin family, $50 from the Meridian family, $50 from the Stewart family, $100 from Chris Conley, $25 from Thomas Conley, $100 from the Spinella Estate, $20 from the Tembioli family, $50 from Ann Dorney, $25 from the O'Keefe family, $10 from Elders Squires, $25 from Ruth Maduno, $25 from the Bart Letter family, $25 from Mary Lou Koch, $30 from Joanne Leach, and $25 from the Chaco family.
That comes out to $584. Did you get that in my head?
Favorable action for the letter of thanks.
Motion made for favorable action, send a letter of thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Item number three on the agenda, please.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Council John of Hanlon. His president to accept $1,000 donation from the Levitt Corporation to the Celebration Account to support Village Fest.
Favorable action, letter of thanks.
Motion made for favorable action. Seconded. Uh, letter be sent with thanks also. All in favor? Uh, hang on, so roll, please. I'm sorry, so roll it all. Is that? That wasn't the first one, but that's all right.
It's all right.
Item number two, we waited so long.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
Okay.
I mean, yeah.
You pass the order.
Ten ye, zero nez.
Okay.
Who says we can't have? Just if I can find the follow-up, these letter, no?
I'm sure we didn't take a roll call.
That's all right, yeah.
Clerk, we read item four on the agenda, please.
Did.
I'm five, I'm sorry, five.
Item number five is a communication from the planning board. Ms. Madarozzo, on Monday, August 22, 2016, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend favorable action to the city council adopted zoning ordinance to allow temporary parking bill number CO-370-16 without any amendments.
Favorable action.
I think the prop motion would be refer to the next meeting and a public hearing be scheduled. I believe we have to have a public hearing on it.
So most...
Okay. Motion made in second to refer to the next meeting for a public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's a roll call, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Not to move to a public hearing.
All opposed? You have referred. Item number eight. Please.
Item number eight is resolution sponsored by Council Anthony DePiero. Resolution requested citywide availability of Narcan. Requested that we find out how much it costs. Ms. Madarozzo, the chief of this request, I offer my assistance regarding the fire department Houston experience with Narcan, and particularly the cost. Currently, the fire department has an agreement with Cabernet Health Alliance to purchase a nasal Narcan at $40 per unit. At one point in the, early in our field use of Narcan, we did use auto injectors. We received those doses from a DPH grant. However, we were unable to sustain the program using the auto injectors because of the price. At the time, those units cost $580. Currently, at any one time, the fire department has a minimum of 20 doses of Narcan in the field. We're averaging three overdoses a week. If there's anything else I can do to help, please note ahead, say, call me, Tony O'Brien.
Okay. Counselor DePiero?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and clerk. Uh, at this point, I'll accept, um, the information provided and refer this item back to sponsor for now. Thank you.
Motion made in second, refer it back to sponsor. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing on, thank you for getting that information. I was always curious about that. All in favor? All opposed? You have referred it back to the sponsor. Uh, item. Clerk, please read item number 10 from the agenda.
Item number 10, resolution sponsored by Council Michael J. McGlaughlin. Resolution regarding residential preference and hiring at the Wynn Boston Casino Resort. I spoke with the gentleman from the Boston Trades. And while he was unable to come this week, he asked that I send a, an official invitation. He will appear at the 26th.
Mr. President, on the motion. That is great to hear that Mr. Dougherty will appear on the 26th. Unfortunately, this past weekend, they held two job fairs, one in the city of Walden and one in the city of Cambridge. One union showed up to the job fairs, the Coppershun Union. Not one other union was presented at any of the job fairs. It's a concern that they need to take this stuff serious. Because if a contract goes out that's a non-union contractor, we're going to hear about it. But the unions don't want to get serious and get their memberships up and get the jobs filled. So there's a little snafu here. Somewhere, there's a missing link. So I'm a little disappointed in what I seen this past weekend. And we need to get this strained out. And I'm glad that he'll appear before us in two weeks. Thank you.
Further the next meeting.
Motion made, motion made in second, refer to the next meeting. Counselor Matuski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've said, stated before, uh, just want to fill the councilman in. I'm, uh, as a member of the Bricklayers Local Three in Charlestown, you remember when they had the grand opening? You know, the groundbreaking? Bricklayers Union wasn't invited. Do you remember when they had the rally against Somerville? You know, uh, the mayor of Somerville was against the proposal and so forth. The bricklayers weren't invited. I went to the union hall that particular morning, Mr. President, and I said, "Don't you know anything that's going on down here at the casino site?" He said, "What are you talking about?" So there's a little lack of communication on Wynn Spot here. And there's, you know, I'm a little old-fashioned and I don't mind it because it works for me. I appreciate a phone call, and I don't think they've reached out the way they should. So you can't, I, I'm speaking on behalf of the bricklayers, okay? And I know on three occasions that they're left in the dark. And, you know, let's put, you can't say it's, uh, the, the union's fault here, at least on the bricklayer's side. And I take offense to the, you know, the Coppershun's. We know that they're front and center. They've been there. And they're getting invited to everything. But I think that Wynn should reach out to the unions a little more. Because I'd be more than happy to volunteer on behalf of, uh, the union I belong to for 35 years to actually go there and help with these apprentice programs. Okay? So that's the way I feel. And me as a councilman, I've been in, you know, I wanted to be invited to a, a letter opening as far as I'm concerned. I got one phone call in two years. Of course, when I was state rep, I did get invited to a few things because they needed me there. But needless to say, Mr. President, you can't put all the eggs against all the unions. Maybe some of them notified and they don't show up. That's their business. But I can tell you, the bricklayers are the best. When you hire non-union, you get what you pay for. You get leaky, leaky bricks. You, you get a lot of that stuff. Look at the schools that we had a problem with here. One school sinking an inch a year. So needless to say, quality union work counts, and they should reach out a little more themselves. Thank you.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
I would respectfully disagree with my good friend and colleague. It is the responsibility of the Boston Buildings Trade Union to notify all of their membership. It is not Wynn's responsibility. It's Wynn's responsibility to notify the Boston Building Trades, and it's their responsibility to get their memberships on, on board, to notify them. So if that's not happening, I agree that there's a lack of communication somewhere and there's a missing link, as I said. So there needs to be some sort of strain and out. Because when you have two job fairs in one day and only one union is represented, how are we going to fill 4,000 construction jobs very quickly? So there is something missing. But it's not on Wynn's behalf. That's why we need to resolve where the missing link is. And I do believe it starts with the Boston Building Trade Union. That's why I invited Mr. Dougherty before us. Thank you.
Yeah. Motion, motion, uh, Counsel McKinnon. Counsel McKinnon.
I, I see this, uh, it's Wynn Boston Harbor Building Trades career fairs. They're having, uh, one in Everett. The rest of them in, like, in Charles, uh, Chelsea, the Reggie Lewis Center, Medford, Cambridge, Walden. Is, and this one's for the Everett Village Fest. So are, are they having a, at the Village Fest, are they having a, a sign up as well? That's why I'm trying to just figure it out. But maybe, um, they need to call and let these people know at this point, you know...
Counsel McGlaughlin.
So, Mr. President, just to clarify for my, my colleague, um, as you'll see on the schedule that he was just referring to, the second item on the calendar is the one that was done in the city of Cambridge this weekend, which happened, Stephen invented it, myself and some of my colleagues were involved in. They set up tables and they invite the unions to come in, bring in their brochure material, and they put it out throughout the local newspapers and so forth to be able to appear with space available to them for a certain amount of time to be able to come in and to hopefully discuss the stuff. So in Cambridge, where you see it, people showed up to talk to specific different unions, and the unions weren't there. They weren't, they weren't represented. So people that were there to talk to Pipefield, whatever the case might be, whatever union it was, they just didn't show up. The only one that showed up and spent the two hours there from 2:00 to 4:00 was the Coppershun Union. So that, that's the process that, that happens. And I only know that because I, I know firsthand from this past weekend. And they just, they, they weren't there. And unfortunately, there was quite a bit of people that did show up to talk to these different unions about the process of going forward. So that's, we, we need to strain out. Thank you.
What do you want to do with the item?
So laid on the table for two weeks and, and anticipate that Mr. Dougherty will appear before us. Thank you.
Laid on the table for two weeks. Second, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. You have the table, the table for two weeks. Can't do 11, but we can do 12. Item 12, please.
Item number 12, resolution regarding the hiring of full-time clinician for the city of Everett.
Could we have the chief of staff and Mr. Demas before us?
Would the, just want the chief of staff?
Chief of staff and Mr. Demas, if we could have them.
Both of them?
Yeah.
Would the gentleman, please, come forward? Gentlemen, if you please identify yourselves.
Eric Gameis, CFO.
Kevin O'Donnell, chief of staff.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Through you to the, um, chief of staff. Has there been any, uh, talk of this? I know it's been on the calendar for probably about a month. Was there any talk of this, um, coming up or down at the mayor's office?
Uh, we had a brief discussion, uh, a while back, but we haven't really followed up by any further at this point.
So if we sent it down through this meeting here, um, can we expect an answer back possibly by the next meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And to Mr. Demas. Mr. Demas, would this, would there be a possibility of any funding for this?
Through the existing operating budget?
Yes.
I would take, have to take a look at Health and Human Services, but if you're adding an additional position, we probably would need a supplemental appropriation because I don't know of any vacancies that would, uh, be able to facilitate the funding of this new position.
Is there any way that you could look into that and then possibly get us an answer back by the, the next meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, the reason why we're asking for this position is because, uh, I have had talks with, um, everyone on the opioid committee as well as the mayor and explained to him the need for it. The need for this is paramount. Reason being is if we're having three, if we're having three overdoses per week according to our fire department, uh, it's definitely, we are behind the eight ball on this right now because I know other communities have this, and it's very effective. What they do is they either ride with the fire or they ride with the police, and they handle basically every aspect of the, uh, the overdose individual, their families, and outreach to them, as well as what programs are available so that we can maybe cure some of this, maybe stop this from happening in our city. Um, so I feel that this is a very, very powerful and, uh, you know, this position right here could be a powerful thing for us to combat the opioid crisis that's in Everett right now. So, uh, I, I ask that you, you bring this to the, the mayor and, uh, basically let him know that the, there are other communities surrounding us right now that are actually using this. And, uh, we're behind the eight ball right now on it because some of them have been using it, like Wakefield has been using it. I spoke to their chief of police, and he told me they've been using it for about seven, eight years now. And he finds it very effective. And what it does is it basically, it, it opens, this position here would basically handle all aspects of the overdose victim. So it would, it would go, uh, Narcan. They would have the Narcan, uh, already onboard. They would bring him to the ER. This person would follow him through, and then their family. So this would be very helpful in this city because of the rate that we're having these ODs. So, um, if you could just bring this to them as a strong message from down here that we would like to see something like this. And, Mr. Demas, if you could look into that for funding purposes or, if possibly grants or anything like that, this is where we need to be. We need to get something like this here in the city so that we can make our city better.
Oh, yes. And the mayor certainly recognizes and is in tune with the alarming situation as, you know, with respect to the opioids.
I spoke to him on several occasions, but he's, he's very in tune to it. Uh, I think that, uh, we spoke about this position as well. And if we can get something like this here in the city, I, I think it would be a plus for us.
Yes. I know he's open, open to and enthusiastic about exploring any avenues we can to improve the situation as it currently stands.
Thank you very much. I'd like to, if any, any other questions? No further questions. Excuse customary thanks. Thank you for appearing, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And, um, I would like to refer this down to the mayor's office with a response back in, uh, two, what is it, two weeks, the 26th? Two meetings, when? 26th of September? 26th of September. It's our next meeting.
Motion made for, for, to the, to the mayor and to have a response back by the meeting on September the 26th.
6th.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have referred. Clerk, we read item 13.
Item number, item number 13, resolution sponsored by Council John Leo McKinnon. Resolution requesting updates on mosquito spraying and Zika virus.
Refer this to the Board of Health with a report back in writing.
They have.
Do they have a report?
Yeah, they have Zika updates. The CDC has announced that the Zika virus has now been diagnosed by me along with recent cases in Lauderdale. This time, the designated areas in Florida conducting treatments against mosquitoes. Travel advisory from the CDC has been issued to this area for those of childbearing age. CDC recommends that if you're at childbearing age or traveling, you check CDC website for updates on Zika. The health department completed a robocall last week on precautions to take during mosquito season. We will continue to update as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I would like a report back on the pucking procedure that they do. They actually put these pucks within the drain systems that we have here. So I wanted to know if that was done, and also if, when that would stop, they would stop doing that, so if they can.
I think it's a process, you see the green bar they're printing?
Absolutely. I just want to know when they started, when they finish.
Motion for the Board of Health to find out what they're doing about mosquito control and insurance system. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Clerk will read item 14.
Item number 14, order sponsored by Councilor John Leo McKinnon, regulating road and control.
Through you, Mr. President, to our clerk. This would be for adatement tonight.
This would be for adatement.
Okay. I ask for adatement on this piece.
Motion made in second for adatement. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio. Councilor DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Mangan. Councilor Motuski.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Polatano.
Yes.
Councilor Sminelli.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eight a's, zero n's, Mr. President.
Eight a's, you have ordained this ordinance.
Thank you.
Clerk will read item 15.
Item 15, resolution, a resolution regarding state budget updates from Everett State delegation.
Could we have a letter sent to the state representative and also to the state senator to appear at our next meeting to update us on the budget and any cuts that were available or that were made to the budget? Yes.
Councilor McLaughlin, please.
Mr. President, on the motion, Senator D. Domenico did ask me to pass along to Councilor McKinnon that he was fully anticipating on coming at the next meeting. He unfortunately this evening had a previous commitment with family and was out of town, but wholeheartedly anticipates coming to our meeting in two weeks and presenting the updated budget on the state budget.
Councilor, at the meeting of September 26th?
Yes.
Okay.
Have both of them, the rep and the senator.
Motion for the meeting of September 26th. I invite a state rep and a state senator to the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have referred. I have clerk read item 16.
Item number 16, resolution sponsored by Councilor John Leo McKinnon. Resolution regarding grading procedures on Ferry Street.
Councilor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President. I had spoke to a representative from National Grid as well. I know the mayor's office had spoke to them as well, and actually, they had a news article that came out in regards to that. So I'd like to refer this down to the mayor's office and just have him, just update us with any new, new grading or anything to that effect on Ferry Street. Reason why I put this on was I was getting complaints of the uneven streets, the holes that they were digging. They were, they were raised up. We're not going to be able to have that over the winter. So I know that they had put attention to it from the mayor's office, so I'm going to send it down to them, so they can handle it.
Second motion. Motion motion for the mayor's office.
With a report back.
With a report back on?
26th.
26th, okay. Motion second to refer to mayor's office, ask for a report back by September 26th. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have referred to the mayor's office with a request by September 26th. Clerk read item 17.
Item number 17 is resolution sponsored by Councilor John F. Hanlon. President, resolution adopting the city of Everett Hazard Mitigation, Hazard Mitigation Plan 2016 update.
Fable action?
Second.
Motion made in second.
Mr. President, maybe I'm having a senior moment. What is this about?
Does it have any information on that?
Yeah, it was proposed last week, the, two weeks ago, the council requested two weeks to look it over before voting on it.
Everett Hazard Mitigation Plan. That emergency, Michael.
The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act passed in 2000 requires that after November 1st, 2014, all municipalities that wish to continue to be eligible to receive FEMA funding for hazarded mitigation grants must adopt a local, must adopt a local hazard mitigation plan and update this plan in five-year intervals. This planning requirement does not affect emergency disaster assistance funding. The attached document is the City of Everett Hazard Mitigation 2016 update. It's an update of the 2008 plan. 2016 update was prepared for the city by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council under the direction of MEMA and the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation. The plan was funded by the federal government. At your earliest convenience, I'm requesting that the honorable city council adopt the resolution making the 2016 update official. City council approval is required as part of the standard process.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, I ask for favorable action.
We have that, all right. You second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made in second for favorable action on adopting the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move. Fable action. Clerk will read item 18.
Item 18, a resolution sponsored by Councilors Hanlon, McLaughlin, Dela Sola Jr., a resolution regarding lighting and cameras on the bike path.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Mr. President, do we have any communication from the mayor's office regarding this, Mr. Madarozzo?
No, I don't have it.
No.
I don't know if Mr. O'Donnell has any information to share, but I know that we were trying to expedite something down that area, and the mayor was in agreement. Sorry, Mr. President.
Would you like, would you like that something to come forward?
I apologize. Sorry about that. Mr. President, if I can invite up the mayor's chief of staff, I apologize.
That's okay. Councilor McLaughlin.
Mr. O'Donnell, I apologize. I just didn't know if you had any brief update on, I know that the mayor had agreed with Councilor Del Soler and I to try to expedite some funding down that area to add some more lighting and cameras, just to kind of make it more public access friendly and a little bit safer down that area. I didn't know if you had an update on where we stood on that.
Ah, yes, it's, it's still a work in progress, and we're working with Tony Souza from the planning department to start implementing some action. We recognize there's a need down there, so.
Do you think 30 days or 60 days, you might have a plan in place of, of how to proceed, or what do you think is best?
I'd be hesitant to answer for the planning department, but I don't think it's something that should be, take any extended period of time.
Okay. Thank, excuse the customary thanks, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, for appearing.
Thank you.
Mr. President, through you, I would make a motion that we lay this over for one month and invite up Tony Souza from the planning department and somebody from the mayor's office with a plan of action in place to add some lighting and cameras.
Councilor, do you have any statistics on anything else that cities and towns might be doing, that are along the bike paths?
I do. There, there is the, the safe, the, I apologize, I just lost my train of thought. There is the Meadowline English School development that's going to happen with the Safe Street Initiative program around the Meadowline English School, that they're going to be doing some work down the bike path area to make it more accessible into the Meadowline English School area over the course of, hopefully, in the next year. And I know that they were trying to maybe try to tie the two projects together, so that we open the bike path only once and not multiple times continue to cut the bike path. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to, Mr. President, but I do know that that work is going to go forward in the next year.
I was just wondering if any of the cities and towns got together and asked the state for any help in doing that kind of stuff. It would be nice if all the cities in this city.
I don't think they did, and I do believe that Malden has already done it on their end as a, as a cost to the city of Malden. From what I understand, I could, I could be wrong, to be honest, but I think Malden has, has done their portion.
Try to find out more information, please.
I think Malden has done their portion, so I think it's, it's our responsibility. But if there's an opportunity to get some state funding and granting, that's obviously always the best course of action.
Okay, thank you. Motion then to refer to the next meeting, for two meetings, you said? One, one month, no, two meetings, okay. Motion clear, table will one month. All in favor?
Aye.
27, please.
Item number 27 is a resolution sponsored by Councilor Peter Raina Polatano. City services discuss how city manages low-hanging branches and process for personal property damage.
Councilor Polatano.
Thanks, Chairman. Now, this came about, I've talked to a few residents who at various points have had, this has been a dry summer. As a result, a lot of branches, trees have, you know, branches have fallen down. I've just got a few questions on how this is, this is handled. If you'll be able to put claims through, they're being told that they're not, that, that they're not liable, or the city's not liable. And I just want to get some, some straight answers on this, and I haven't really been able to do that. So I'd like to refer this to Public Safety Committee.
Our, our public?
Yes, please.
Motion made, made, second anyone?
Invite someone from city services. Invite somebody from city services and possibly from the city solicitor's office as well.
City services and solicitor office to come.
Yes, please.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so referred and so invited. Clerk will read item 28.
Item number 28 is resolution sponsored by Councilor Peter Raina Polatano that in the future, any contracts or movies being filmed in the city of Everett include a movie credit acknowledging that the movie was filmed in the city of Everett.
Councilor Polatano.
Right, I mean, we look, I mean, we've had four movies filmed here in Everett. It's great this summer to be able to go to see Ghostbusters and see the Old Everett High School right there prominently. You know, you stay for the end of the credits, it acknowledges City of Boston. You know, these are, this is different language now. We're, we're, we are developing a world-class city here with the Wynn Project and everything else. And not that people are going to come to Everett because of the image from Old Everett High School. But the thing is that, you know, negotiating these contracts, how difficult it is it to, and is it even, is it even difficult to be able to add a credit toward the end that the filming was here done in the city of Everett? You know?
Thank you.
You know, you'll see City of Boston, you'll see City of Boston's surrounding areas. Well, you know, I like to think of us as better than being the surrounding areas. So I'd like to refer this to the city solicitor and ask her a response in, at our next meeting.
Motion made in second to refer the city solicitor for response by the next meeting, September 26th. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have so referred. Item clerk will read item 29.
Item 29, resolution sponsored by Councilor Peter Raina Polatano that may consider revising his plans to convert the Old Everett High School to include using the Rockwood Auditorium as a small venue for concerts and other performances to generate additional revenue for the city of Everett.
Councilor Polatano.
Thank you. I mean, last year, when this first came before us about the mayor's plans to convert the old high school into a new city hall, you know, there was various ideas coming in. I actually think it was a nice-looking plan to be able to convert some historic architecture like that into a viable piece of property. But revenue, generating revenue, the cost, there were a lot of different things that came into, into play. And now that the casino money's starting to come in, you know, I'm a little more open to these things. One of the things I discovered this summer was that what's become very popular in a lot of areas is these small concert venues. If you go to Lynn, the Lynn Auditorium is an auditorium attached to the Lynn City Hall. You'll find groups and concerts from, from what used to be world-class acts that can no longer fill a Great Woods, or a, you know, down in Mansfield, or a Boston, Boston Garden. But they're packing these places in. The success of the Lynn Auditorium alone has been enough to cause a revitalization of, of another venue up in Beverly, the Cabot Theater. Again, same thing, went to several concerts up there this summer, saw some great bands that packed the house, bands I never would have expected to see touring. But this is, these, these small venues are becoming a very popular alternative. And by comparison, Rockwood Auditorium is actually a much nicer place than two of these places. So if the mayor is still considering, you know, his, his plans to prep before the council the idea of converting the old high school, I think equal consideration to look at the possibility, especially with the ties with Wynn Entertainment, of possibly turning Rockwood Auditorium into one of these type of small venues. You know, this would attract concerts and comedians, you know, comedy acts that would bring additional revenue into the city, as well as additional exposure. Now, that revenue, again, anything that generates money for the city is good for the city, whether it's going for education, or it's going into our, into our, into our streets, or public services. And, you know, I would like to refer this to the mayor's office. I actually have a meeting with the mayor on Wednesday, and I plan to talk to him at great length on this. But I would like to refer this to the mayor's office.
Motion made in second to refer to the mayor's office. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have referred to the mayor's office. Motion made in second to adjourn. Any further discussion, hearing done, all in favor? All opposed, we have adjourned.